Good evening. Welcome to the zoning board of adjustment meeting. Welcome this evening. To my left is Mr. Carter-Fock, who's Deputy Planning Manager for the City of Nashua. Across the way here is Kathy Vitale, alternate member, Mr. Steve Lionel, full-time member, Mr. James Welsh, alternate member, Mr. Robert Shaw, full-time member, and here to my right is Mr. Jack Carrier, our Vice Chair, Ms. Mary Ellen McKay, our Secretary, and I am JP Boucher, the Chair. This meeting is recorded by written transcript, audio and video recording. Please direct all testimony into the microphone and only one person speak at a time. If you don't already have a copy tonight's agenda, you can find one out back and feel free to get up and get one if you'd like. Tonight we'll be hearing requests for deviations from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. The five criteria required for this board to grant a request for a special exception are: One, the requested use must be listed in Table of Use Regulations as a special exception. The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly repair pedestrian safety. The requested use will not overload any public water, drainage, or sewer system, or any other municipal system such as other areas of the city that would be subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare. Any special regulations for the use set forth in other sections of the zoning ordinance are fulfilled. The requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district of adjoining zones nor be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents of Nashua. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established for the approval of a variance are: The variance will not be contrary to public interests. The spirit of the ordinance is observed. Substantial justice is done. The values of surrounding properties are not diminished. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. Per the City of Nashua bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve in any application. Also, the board will hear all scheduled cases as long as a quorum of three voting members are present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that the board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Fock and the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Again, please contact Mr. Fock for more information. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part is called the public hearing. This is where the applicant and citizens address this board and speak to the merits of the case. The order of testimony tonight will be as follows. The applicant will have 15 minutes to present their case. After that, those in favor will have five minutes to testify. After those in favor that have testified, those in opposition or with questions will have also five minutes each to testify. When they have finished, the applicant then has five minutes to speak in rebuttal of that previous testimony. And then finally, a representative and only one person of those in opposition or questions will also have the opportunity to have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. Please direct all testimony to this board and not the audience. If you have any questions about an application, they are to be directed to the board and we will get them answered for you. The second part of each case is what we call the public meeting. This is where the board debates the merits of the case amongst ourselves. Please note that during the public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. If you need to have a conversation, feel free to step out into the hallway. The acoustics in this auditorium is such that we can hear the slightest whispers or conversations, and we appreciate your cooperation in this matter. Mr. Fock, is there any changes to the agenda tonight?
No, there are not.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions before we get started? Okay. Call the first -- it'll open the public hearing and call the first case, which is owner of Olivax LLC, 1617 Southwood Drive. They're requesting a use variance from the land use code, Section 190-15, Table 15-1, number 97, to allow office space in a portion of the existing building. It's in the PI zoning district. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. For the record, my name is Gerald Prunier. I'm an attorney with us at 20 Trafalgar Square in Nashua and here representing the applicant this evening. You may remember that on May 12, 2015, which was yesterday, we were here before you requesting a variance for retail space, and we told you at that time it would be Alex Shoe Store. You granted the variance, and Alex Shoe Store moved over to 1617 Southwood Drive. At that time, we had to get planning board approval as well, and when we got planning board approval, the site plan showed or made note -- this is what we're here for this evening, this one sentence. On the plan, it indicated that it was for all retail. It didn't mention apartment, I mean, office space. However, in our meeting, in the meeting notes of that meeting, I stated right at the beginning that they would use about 15,000 or 16,000 square feet in the first floor for retail, and the rest of the building would be used for storage and for office space. Mr. Koots, who also testified that evening, also stated exactly the same thing when he stated that he will be purchasing the property and plan on occupying the entire first floor and maybe finding an office tenant for the second floor, or perhaps use a small part of it for office space. That's what's been done since we bought and renovated the building. When we came to get a building application for an office tenant, we were told that there might be a problem because of the fact that, as I indicated, that the site plan, the planning staff said, indicated all retail, and there were going to be office spaces in it. So we didn't hide anything. We said exactly what we're going to use it, we're using for that at the present time. When we were told that, being lovers and not fighters as we are, we decided that let's clear it up, come in, and that's why we're here this evening, just to put on the fact that we're putting office spaces so that we can put on the site plan that we're going for retail and office. I requested all of the testimony at the May 12, 2015 hearing be incorporated tonight because we met all the criteria at that time. It's the same thing. There's nothing new that's being proposed. It's exactly the same thing we proposed to you back on May 12, 2015. If any of you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions, anybody?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition or what concerns with this application? All right, seeing none, I close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Yes, Mr. Fock?
I think, I find support for the application. I think the written application, as we received, I don't have any issues with it. I think it's thorough. I didn't realize that it was, the testimony was in that nature when we heard this three years ago, but it was park industrial before it became the shoe store. It's still park industrial area. I think everything is fine, and I support it as it is. I see no reason not to support it.
Yes, Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm likewise in support. I mean, this had previously been all office space. I think, at least my, and I think most, the rest of the board's concern at the time had been more about the matter of how much would be used for retail, and as Attorney Prunier noted, I think it was our general understanding that there'd be a fair amount of warehousing as well as some office usage, but the most of our concern, again, as I recall, was really about the retail space. So I feel very comfortable with having this office usage, and it really was, I think, part of our general understanding from that point in time as well.
Anyone else?
Just maybe you might want to mention the five voting members.
Yes, I'm sorry. Again, we're in the meeting here, and I know that the audience is listening. For the record, should I mention this before? We have five full-time members here, so that is Mr. Lionel, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Carrier, Mrs. McKay, and myself, and then the alternate members of Mr. Welsh and Mrs. Vitale. We will all participate in the public hearings and the public meetings, but only the full-time members will be voting per bylaws, state law. Anyone else like to make a comment?
This looks fine to me. I wasn't on the board at the time, but I don't see any problem with this.
And I also recall the meeting, and I recall the, so I'm agreeing. Anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Carrier?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner of Olivax LLC. Again, the address is 1617 Southwood Drive, and once again, the request is a use variance to allow office space in a portion of an existing building. I believe the board finds a variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, which essentially it was an industrial building before it became part retail, which was approved by this board. At that time, the intent was to continue to have a portion of it as office space, and I think the board finds that it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance to allow this portion of a building to essentially remain, you might say, as office space. I think the board finds it will not adversely affect property values or surrounding parcels. Board, I think, finds there's no contrar, it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice to the building owner as rendered by this use variance, so I make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Motion of the floor is to approve the use variance, seconded by Mr. Lionel. All in favor? That's unanimous? Close the public meeting for case number one and open the public hearing for case number Case number two, the owner is James and Darlene Fleisch, 20 Valhalla Drive. They are requesting variance from the land use code, Section 190-264, to exceed maximum accessory use area, 40% allowed, 43% existing, 51% proposed, to replace an eight-by-ten shed with a 10-by-20 shed, is in the R9 zoning district. Welcome, sir. Just give your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's James Fleisch. My address is 20 Valhalla Drive. Good evening, everybody. Yes, we're here tonight looking for a variance to allow us to tear down a shed we built 20 years ago when we moved here, eight-by-ten shed. It's time to go and replace it with a larger, new shed. When I actually reapplied, it's, I had it down as 10-by-18. I don't know if that changes when I had to put in the application for the variance. So it's in the back corner of the yard, fenced-in yard, out of sight to store, you know, tools, yard stuff, all the lawn tools, pool supplies, that sort of thing.
You good with that?
Yeah. It's my first time answering. I don't know, don't know what else to talk about and say.
Well, we've read your application.
Okay.
It was thorough enough that we understood what you were doing.
Mm-hmm.
If there's any questions, we'll take this opportunity to ask them. Is there any questions for the applicant? Okay, you're all set.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone, sir? Give your name and address, please.
Mr. Chairman, members, my name's John Jackson. My address is 18 Valhalla. My property is adjacent to Mr. Fleisch's and with the fencing, et cetera, and I've been a neighbor of his for all of the time that he's been here, which would be approximately 20 years, and I speak in favor of that. I have no objection whatsoever.
Okay. Is there any questions?
Well, it's not really a question. I just appreciate the testimony because when, you know, there's a request for something that's close to, you know, in a butter that might impact them, I certainly appreciate hearing, you know, that, you know, in this case, you know, you or the butter is fine with it, and it makes me feel much more comfortable with the application. So thanks for taking the time to come out tonight.
Okay, well, thank you.
Is there anybody else to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, anybody with concerns with this application? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Yes, Mr. Carrier?
I, you know, in looking at the site, I didn't think, you know, there's a fence there. I think I saw the top of the existing shed, and my sense was that it wasn't going to be overbearing. I see about an analogous amount of, you know, items, whether they're sheds, or fences, or pools and such in the neighborhood, that it just seemed to match and blend and not kind of stick out as, you know, because what we're here for is the increase in, you know, accessory use area, but I don't see that as being an issue at all in this case. It's just a minor encroachment, so I'm fine with it as the application is. I think the applicant said it was a 10-by-18 versus a 10-by-20, but that's less than what we have tonight, so I see no issue with that.
Anybody else like to make?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it. I mean, I think this is one of these cases where, you know, I think that the house itself is not that large, per se, and with the pool especially, it's one of those balance things that I don't think that there's an overwhelming nature to this overage, and I think it seems consistent with the rest of the neighborhood, as well as Mr. Carrier noted, so I think it's a reasonable request. And I think especially, you know, the neighbor, it really provides the most impact by the shed, the larger shed being closer to him being good with this, and while they are meeting a setback, so there's no concern there, we still, you know, it is a little bit larger structure and closer, so to me, that gives just added kind of comfort to this application.
Anybody else? I'm also in favor of this and agree. Whoever, first of all, is there anybody who would like to make a motion, and I'd like to make a comment before that?
I'd be willing to make a motion.
So as advertised, it was 10-by-20, and he's asking just by 10-by-18. I don't know if we should just leave it like it's advertised, or are you going to, I mean, the two extra, two feet probably wouldn't bother me. Oh, I don't know if it, let me, let me rephrase that. I don't know if it would be a difference to any of those who would be in favor of the motion, the two feet. You're going to, we're going to go with what the applicant's saying, or just go as advertised? Yes, Mr. -- Mrs. Vitale?
I wouldn't be, have a problem with the extra two feet, just that it stays the distance indicated off the, off the property lines.
My thought was it would be, it would be really in his property, not neighbor's encroachment, but it was just a comment, and either way, it doesn't matter to me.
I'll make.
And I'm fine either way. I don't, I'm not too concerned about it. I don't think it's a significant enough factor, so if there's a sentiment one way or the other, I can support either option. Leave it in your hands, Mr. Carrier, perhaps, and just...
All right. I guess I'd be inclined to make a motion for what he was planning on building.
That's fine.
So I'll make a motion to approve, or I'll just say again, the owner is James, James and Darlene Fleisch of 20 Valhalla Drive. The request was to exceed the maximum accessory use area. We have 51% proposed. That would be calculated with a 10-by-20 shed. The applicant's testimony is going to be a 10-by-18 shed, which I make a motion to approve. I think the board finds a variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, which is a larger shed to store common items that a homeowner would in this neighborhood. I think the board finds that it's within the spirit and ten of the ordinance for a shed of this size. I think the board finds it will not adversely affect property values and surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to public interest for this overage, and that substantial justice to the homeowner is served, so I make a motion to approve the 10-by-18 shed.
Motion of the floor is to approve, seconded by Mr. Shaw. All in favor? That's unanimous. Motion carries. Only one I will give you is that there is a three-day window of appeal, but it seems unlikely. All right? Thank you for coming. We close the public meeting and open the public hearing for the next case, which is Jeremy and Kate Lemoine, 23 Stanley Lane, requesting a variance from the land use code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach five feet into the 10-foot required right side yard setback to construct and attach six-foot wide mudroom and 24-foot by 24-foot garage that is in the R9 district. Welcome. Give your name and address, please.
Good evening. Jeremy Lemoine, owner, 23 Stanley Lane, Nashua, New Hampshire, with my wife Kate. She's a little under the weather, so I'll do all the talking tonight. So we're both lifelong residents of Nashua. Bought our first home, Stanley Lane. We're starting out a family. We have an eighth-month-old. We have another one on the way. Last winter was rough on us, on our cars, getting into the house. The deck that we have currently that was built when we bought the house is old. We want to get rid of that. We feel the garage would be beneficial to our family, not only the use of the garage and the mudroom. The mudroom being the fact that right now, our only entrance into our house, other than the front entrance, which we don't use, the side entrance, we walk right into the kitchen, and it just attracts a whole bunch of dirt and everything into the kitchen. We don't like that. So the mudroom would be, you know, the transition space that we're looking for. The garage would be the housing for our cars, and it would be functional for our family in the sense that we wouldn't have to deal with the elements. Right now, my, like I said, my wife is pregnant, and I don't want to, I don't want her to have another winter where she's constantly running back and forth in the weather and the inclement, so we feel that this would be not only beneficial for us as a family, but everybody else in the neighborhood, because with the addition to our garage, it will up our property value and everybody's property value in the neighborhood. So that's pretty much it for me.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Carrier?
Just wondering, is it, maybe if it's in the application, I missed it, is it proposed to be a one-story garage?
It will be a two-story garage, but the top will not be finished. It will just be a, kind of like a storage. It'll be joists, and we'll just put plywood down. We'll just use it for storage. Maybe in the future, we're looking at making an addition out of it, but right now, when we're building it, it's just going to be meant for storage, so it's not going to be finished at all.
So the roof line for the...
Will match.
Will match the existing roof line, okay. And then I think your, the topography is it kind of goes uphill, your driveway does, so would the, like, the level of the garage floor, is that proposed to be at the level of the first floor or down below, or just trying to get a feel for the height of that?
Right, right. It would be level with the foundation currently, so we'd flatten out the driveway, and it would be level, and then the mudroom would have about three or four steps up into the mudroom, and we're planning on doing storage, unraid the mudroom. So the garage itself will have, you know, a brand-new asphalt-finished, or concrete, I should say, a concrete finish, but it would be flat, level with the land. So it lands at an angle, we'd flatten it out and make it level.
Okay. And just, you know, I see that the house, you know, you're on a cul-de-sac.
Yes.
So it's a little bit of a rectangular pegging, a roundish hole, when you try to fit homes, and so it's like the back corner of the floor.
It'd be the right back corner is the only part that's encroaching five feet. As you move forward, it's less and less, and actually at the end, at the front part, it's not even 10 feet, it's more like 13 feet.
Those are the only questions I have. Thanks for clarifying that.
Mr. Shaw?
One that kind of, from, that kind of follows that a little bit further, I just was wondering if you had been able to consider bringing the garage and the new structure forward a few feet where you could still stay within the, you know, kind of so-called building box. You would definitely have that triangular section less encroaching, but clearly, it still would, you know, it might reduce that five feet, you know, to maybe three feet or something like that. But it seems pretty clear that, just my own quick kind of drawing here, you can't completely avoid it, but I realize that sometimes with these kind of things, you start to have some other challenges or issues if you were to try to bring this new structure forward in the property, but I just wanted that you could at least comment on that.
Yes.
What considerations and challenges or whatever there might be.
Yep. So we, we have definitely considered that, especially in the sense that we know our neighbor had some issues with us, you know, encroaching at five feet, so we totally get that, but we want it to be flush with the house. We don't want it to be forward. If we have to, we will, but this is what we want. We want it to be flush with the house.
So is there any, if you will, kind of engineering challenges or structural issues or anything as far as if you did, if, you know, this board might want to have that be part of our consideration? So is there anything that if we were to pursue something like that, that would actually, you know, we also like to be sensitive that we're not going to be, you know, causing other issues that either we don't foresee, or again, that might have already come up? So I understand there's a design aesthetic and, you know, there's issues, you know, there are things about, you have that garage pushed forward, it changes the whole kind of look and feel.
It does.
And, you know, I think usually, most people want the garage pulled back, if anything, or like you said, flush, so I get that from the design perspective, so I just wanted to explore if there was anything else that would truly prevent you from possibly moving it forward.
Right. So the original design was actually starting at the chimney and going back, but then we would be encroaching on the back setback.
Yeah.
Or the backyard, the backyard setback. So we moved it forward to flush with the house. We have probably, I would say, about an additional 10 feet to move it up, but ideally, we don't want to do that. We want it to be flush with the house. This is a big investment, and we want what we want. We want it to be flush with the house.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And then your, your back door is to the back right of the house, right?
Correct.
So if you were to move that addition up right now, you're kind of squeezing that back entrance, right?
That door is gone. We're getting, we're getting rid of that.
Okay.
The mudroom, we're getting rid of that door and that side window. That's all gone.
Okay.
That's actually going to be opened up, it's going to be an archway, and it's actually going to be part of the mudroom.
Okay.
So that whole side entrance is gone.
Okay. So, all right. So, all right, so that may be some other type of a challenge, because now you're opening up to the other side of the house. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, oh, excuse me, ma'am? Come on up, give your name and address, please. Take your time.
My name is Annette Cameron. I live at 21 Stanley Lane, and I live on the right side of my neighbors. I'm just, I'm not sure if I'm in favor or proposed, because I can't visualize how it's going to look. Certainly, I understand it would increase the value and improve the looks of the neighborhood, but my concern would be with my fence. I have a very nice vinyl fence, so I'm trying to visualize how close that would be to that structure. That's all. I mean, if it works, that's great. I mean, I'll be in favor of it, but the concern is, will it cause any...
Mr. Carrier is going to just give you an idea of a sketch that we have.
Okay. So where would my fence...
Your fence is likely on the property line.
Okay.
So that, if it were approved as is, that corner would be five feet. So, that, if it were approved as is, that corner would be five feet from your fence. Building block would be 10 feet. So, they have the right to build 10 feet. They're asking to encroach five feet beyond it in the back.
Mr. Chair? I don't think they're being picked up on the mic, so-
I'm sorry.
Sorry. With that construction going on, could that cause any damage to the fence? I have-
So, most likely not, that they, it appears that they're going to have a contractor there.
Okay.
And again, I mean, we could never say that no accident's going to happen, but I am sure that this is done all the time, and I know that they would be, I know that the contractor will use its utmost care to do that. So, again, I hear your concern about your fence. I would be concerned too on the vinyl fence, because I know that that's not-
Not cheap.
It's not cheap, right? You're exactly right. I would say that, and I think the applicant would agree, that whoever they hire as a contractor is going to be very well aware of that, of that area.
So, if I needed to make repairs or if I needed to change something, having that structure, would that cause any issues with replacing?
So, if you need to access your fence on that side, there'll be five feet just at one point, and I assume that you'll have plenty of room to access your fence.
Okay.
I'm assuming that your neighbor would allow you to do that.
And I'm not disagreeing, I'm just trying to understand.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other concerns besides your fence?
Just the fence.
We did, we all take a look at properties, and I did see your home on the, on the right side, so I know exactly what you're talking about.
Okay. One other thing, if there, because there's lots of trees there, if I had to have a tree removed, would, I don't think that would be in the way either. You know, sometimes you have to have a crane come in.
Crane, right. I think that, you know, no matter what the challenges are, I mean, some people have power lines on their side of the street, and they have to have a crane, you know, sometimes they have to crane them over the power lines. So, I think, again, my opinion is, looking at your property, I don't think it would be any more of a challenge with this addition here, because again, we're talking about a very small piece, they were, you know, that they're encroaching, so I don't think that it would be, it would cause any problems, any more than it would be now without anything there.
Okay. Okay. I was just trying to understand visually, because I couldn't visualize it.
Sure.
Okay. Can I have this?
Yeah, you can hold on to that if you'd like.
So, so, Mr. Falk here has informed me that there's approximately a total of only 30 square feet that's encroaching into the, to the side yard setback. So, so, you know, this is not a large square footage encroachment. All right. Is there anybody else to speak with concerns?
Actually, just a second, Mr. Chairman. So, I think we, you were trying to ask for more, if anybody else wanted to speak in favor-
Okay.
-and just, we should make sure there, if there is anybody else, because-
Right. Absolutely. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the application?
So, my name is Jie Zhang.
Could I have your name and address?
My name is Jie Zhang. So, I live in 21 Stanley Lane.
25.
So, yeah, I'm the one neighbor of Jeremy and Kate.
Right.
So, for us, probably it's not affect anything like 21. So, we, actually, we like see they improve their house and improve their neighborhood house value. Also, but anything we want, because we have a four-month-old kid in our house, so when they start building the, everything, we don't want the, we want the low noise to construction. So, for the building, we don't have any issue, but we just want to make sure in the whole process of building, so we can have some relative low noise to not affect the, my, my later, you know, little newborn and probably others. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all.
All right. Mr. Falk, there is ordinances in the city of Nashua, correct?
That's true. There are, there is a noise ordinance, and, you know, people can't start heavy equipment or loud engines. I think it's 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., so, you know, the normal work hours, people can work, obviously. I mean, there's going to be hammers, and there's going to be saws, and some noise that is going to occur. You can't help that, but it's only through the regular hour, daylight hours, not at night.
All right. Thank you.
And the addition of the garage is a short-term addition. It doesn't take that long to build one. Hopefully, for you guys' sake, they'll be done in, you know, probably six weeks or so, eight weeks.
Sir, would you mind coming back up for a minute? We'd like you to, for the record, could you spell your name for us?
Z.H.A.N.G.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none? Anybody with concerns with the application? Okay. Seeing none? I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting.
I didn't know if Mr. Lemoine might want to speak to that or not.
Yeah. Was it opposition?
No. He's spoken in favor. Well, I thought the woman was-
She had, she took no position.
Okay. No position, for sure. That's fine.
Are we okay with that? Yes, Mr. Lionel?
I support this. I definitely support the applicant's desire to have the garage flushed with the front of the house. I personally find it unsightly to have the garage forward of the main part of the house, but I see that a lot. So, I think that what he's planning to do is going to look the nicest of all of the options. And yes, there's a, there's a tall vinyl fence, nice fence, on the right side, but that will, it will screen pretty much all of the garage, and I believe that this would definitely improve values throughout the neighborhood. Having, having a garage with a mudroom attached, just like I have at my house, which at one time had been a standalone garage before I bought my house, definitely improves things.
Ms. Vitale?
I would be in support of it. It's not that large of an incursion into the setback, and he almost, unless he did bring it forward, and I have to agree that I believe the, having it flush is in the best interest of the looks and it being nicer and everything else. He would still have an incursion, I believe, if he even brought it forward. So, I, it's not that much. It's a back corner. He, you know, it's not like you can saw off that back corner or anything to get a garage that 24 by 24 is in a reasonable size also for a two-car garage.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm in support, and I think this is, you know, this is a case where we've got a fairly uniquely shaped lot. The building envelope is, you know, is, matches that, and the house is placed at an angle already, so there's many aspects just of the way things are situated and what can be done, you know? And I wanted to pursue that, pulling things forward. I agree, I don't, aesthetic-wise, it wouldn't be my preference either, and I think the fact that you can't completely eliminate the encroachment without then going also down in size, so the minimal encroachment that this has, the fact that it's like one of these triangular kind of elements versus even something that's, you know, I think this is a lot different than when something's running the length of the property and running the length of, you know, the setback line. So, I think for all those reasons, I find support for this application.
I too find support for the application, and like Mr. Lionel, Ms. Vitale, and Mr. Shaw, aesthetically, it makes more logical common sense to encroach the five feet as opposed to maybe three feet. It's a very small difference. In response to Mrs. Cameron's issues around the contractor or damage, I'm assuming that no one today is going to hire a contractor who's not insured against all of this, and so that insurance would then protect and cover the neighbors, which was a real concern. And as for having things close and maybe needing a bucket truck to come in and take out trees, in where my house sits, a few years back, we had a bad storm, and a tree came down from my neighbor's property on top of my brand-new vehicle, but took out a piece of our roof of the garage, and it was very close, and the company that came in and took care of it, took the bucket truck and had to go up and over with what they did, because the line is close to the fence, but they managed. I mean, I watched it. It was kind of scary to watch. I wouldn't have wanted to have been the guy in the bucket, but he did a good job, and it can be done. So, I just wanted to maybe alleviate a little bit of your fears, Mrs. Cameron, because they're real and valid, but I do support this application.
Mr. Carrion?
In looking at the application, I felt the same about the potential of pulling it forward, but, you know, as I understand it, that door you pointed out, which is going to be opened up, nonetheless, the entrance to the house is currently on the side, is in the back, and is intending to stay that way, because that's where the kitchen is. So, that is, you know, a special challenge here, which I didn't understand until the testimony tonight, because I was feeling, I guess I didn't think they looked, garages look that bad if they're forward a little bit, but I guess it's all a matter of personal taste, but in this situation, I think it is an encumbrance to have that pulled forward. I was also, you know, being very sensitive to the butters, as we, as I sightwalk this, it's hard to get a sense how, you know, how much it would be, it may be impeding on the butters' property, but Mrs. Cameron's concerns were really about, you know, the fence and not like, you know, that the structure's going to be five feet closer than it needs to be. So, I find support for it. I don't think, I don't think it's an issue that the foundation would be poured and built five feet from the fence. I mean, if something were to inadvertently get broken, I'm completely confident the contractor would make it right again. So, I didn't have concerns with that. And with the other butter, I'm glad you clarified those hours. I knew there were some hours out there that was restricted, so I think Mr. Falk said it was seven to six. I didn't know that. But, you know, there's going to be noise during construction in that time. There's no way around it. I don't think it's going to be overbearing, and, you know, I also think a lot of that noise is going to be directed to the right, not the left, because that's where the garage is. But that is a temporary situation, and I wouldn't want to not grant, you know, an approval, or the delta between what they're asking and what they're permitted, that five feet, there's really going to, it's not like it's going to be any greater noise that they're going five feet over. So, while I hope the noise doesn't disturb, you know, the butters' young child, I don't think this granting of a variance would make the noise any worse than what it might be. So, I'm in favor of it as presented.
Ms. Vitale?
We're talking mainly about the garage, but it is a two-story addition with maybe some plans for use in the future, so they would have to come back before the board if, if that would in fact take place down the road.
Yeah. And for I stand, because it's in a setback, that they would have to come back, so.
Okay. Just want that on the record, that that would have to happen.
Any other comments? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll go first.
I haven't done it tonight, so why not? Okay. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Jeremy and Kate Lemoine, address 21 Stanley Lane. They're requesting a variance from land use code, section 190-116, table 16-3, to encroach five feet into the 10-foot required right side yard setback to construct and attach six-foot wide mudroom and 24-by-24-foot garage. This is in the R9 district. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the particular configuration of the lot shape on the cul-de-sac, and we have discussed various options and decided that there is no other reasonable method of constructing this garage that would, that wouldn't require an area variance. It is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We believe it will improve the property values of surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to the public interest and substantial justice to the applicant would be served, so I make a motion to approve this variance.
The motion is to approve, seconded by Mr. Shaw. All in favor? That's unanimous. Your application has been approved. Don't forget, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Keep that in mind, but you can call the City Planning Department, Mr. Falk, as early as tomorrow, to talk to him about your next steps. Thank you very much. All right. Close the public meeting for this case and open the public hearing for the next case. The owner is Kevin O'Laughlin. Applicant is Ronald and Gail Fraser. The address is 23 Stanley-
No, that's not right.
Oops, I'm sorry.
Copy over. 16 Pine Hill.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. So, let me just repeat that again. The owner is Kevin O'Laughlin. The applicant is Ronald and Gail Fraser, 16 Pine Hill Avenue, Nashua. They are requesting the following. One, a special exception from the land use code, section 190-15, table 15-1, number three, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit to be constructed over an existing house in the following variances. Two, from the land use code, section 190-32, to exceed the maximum size of an accessory dwelling unit, 750 square feet allowed, 1,184 square feet proposed. And three, from the land use code, 190-16, table 16-3, to encroach seven feet into the 10-foot required left side yard setback to construct a 32-by-37 addition on the second story of an existing house. It's in the R.A. Zone District. Welcome. If you give me your name and address, please.
Kevin O'Laughlin, 16 Pine Hill.
Gail Fraser, 21 Pioneer Drive.
Ronald Fraser, 21 Pioneer Drive.
And what we would like to do is put a second floor, second-story addition onto 16 Pine Hill for an apartment, in-law apartment upstairs, where he asked the builder to design it to stay inside the main structure of the house frame, so it doesn't look out of place. The main part of the house is the size of the second-floor addition he'll put on. He's going to keep part of the existing roof line, so that it doesn't look like a box is being put on, so it keeps the character of the house, and he's also going to bring the upper roof line out to match that. He's matching all the windows we have in the existing house to look all the same across the front and on the sides. We're going straight up, and so they told us that the left side goes over further to the dentist office, so that's where we're going across there. We do have a, an entrance when you walk in the house. There's a hall. There's already a six-foot closet that would be a staircase to go upstairs that's already existing in the coat closets next to it. There is a separate living room and dining room that you go into, which have doors on it as well, so. So, we're hoping to put it up so that it all blends in and looks the same as the existing house, just with another story on top of it, so.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Carrion?
Just to clarify, so where you're planning on going up, is that, is that the square footage of, like, 1,184? So, in other words, the second floor or the proposed new second floor, if you go up as you're proposing, that's 1,184 square feet?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. And then, again- Okay, um, and then a- again, you're here, the seven feet into the 10-foot required left side yard setback, that's where the current foundation already is?
Yes, sir. Yes.
I, I gotta say, it doesn't really look, you don't really see where your property line is. It just kind of blends in. There's like a little, little, uh, swale there and then, and then you're in the parking lot after that. Okay, so I, I, so again, your request essentially for that seven feet of overage is because it's already there. Just go up. And the 1880, uh, 1,184 is because you're, uh, you just want to keep that second floor, the, the second, the dwelling unit, you don't want to have like 750 square feet of one unit and try to have something incorporated with the downstairs. So I, okay, I just wanted to make sure I had that right. Those were the only questions I had.
Any other questions?
I'll just comment that we're, we're being, we're being asked both for the variance and the special exception for the accessory dwelling unit. So, um, are we talking about both of those at the same time?
Yes, and then when we go into our own session, we'll vote on those separately.
Yeah. Mr. O'Laughlin, you understand that there are, um, covenants that get added to your, uh, your deed, had to be registered with, with the state? And so you've, you've read and agree to all of these covenants?
Yes, sir.
That's it.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Shaw.
I just wanted to confirm, I'm, I'm pretty certain by everything you presented in the testimony earlier, you're not adding any, uh, plans to add any additional doorway, exterior doorways to the house at this point?
Deck going on the outside on the second floor, just a deck with a side.
Yeah, okay, but...
In the back of the house.
Yeah, in the back, that's, yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you. Does anybody else, uh, would like to speak in favor of the application? Anybody else with, uh, concerns with the application? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the, uh, public hearing and open the public meeting. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead. You know, at first I looked at this property and, and when you go look at it, you don't really know where that property line is, right? Because it looks like they have a lot more property than, than not. But again, you know, we got the application, I saw where the property line is and of course, um, you know, you're trying to figure out why that's so close. And then when you actually realize where the property is, um, yeah, um, you understand what's going on. I think that, you know, the house is uniquely placed on that property. I mean, those lots, uh, you know, that, that is a triangle piece of property, that whole, you know, with the, the home surrounding it is, is, is in that triangle piece, um, that borders, you know, Pine Hill Sullivan and, um, Broad Street. And again, you know, this long, narrow, more like a long, narrow piece of property. Where, where the houses are budding or where the, as close as the property line is, that parking lot for the dentist office that's on Broad Street. So again, an existing home and what they're asking to do again is not change the exterior dimensions. It's, they have because most, you know, part of that home is in the, in the side setback. So, um, I don't have a problem with that. And then with the size, I, I think again, um, you know, with the, the reasoning why they want to have that size above the home is, I think it's part of it is obviously aesthetically it doesn't look like this, this little narrow box on top, top of the house. And, um, again, I don't have, you know, any, any issues with that at all.
We could put in, in this open atrium in the middle, right?
Right. Uh, yes, Mr. Falk.
Um, I believe I emailed the board some information from Pam and the assessing department. The owner actually went down to the assessing department to have, have some clarification on the size of their lot. And there, there is a little change that Pam put in the GIS map about their lot. Actually, there's a little, a little area on the other side of the, of the front that was added to the property and some was taken away. Uh, it all was about the same square footage and it really didn't affect this variance application. There's the same setback issues, but I just wanted to make sure on the record that we give credit to Pam for spending quite a bit of time with, with the owner and applicant to, um, clarify some deed information that we didn't have updated. So it's nice because now they can move forward with, with clean titles and deeds and lot configuration numbers that we didn't have before. So it was a lot of great work by Pam. I'm sure the applicant, the owner will agree to that as well.
Anybody else? Mr. Curry.
Um, I certainly agree with everything that you started off with. Uh, just, I'm in support of it. I just, uh, make sure we cover it. I think the written application and the oral testimony tonight covers all of the nine special criteria for an accessory dwelling unit. Uh, you know, it's going to, no new doors, it's going to remain incidental to the single-family look. I just wanted to say it's, you know, I, I think when this is done, it's just going to look like a single-family home with two stories on it. And that's the spirit and intent of the eight, you know, the accessory dwelling unit. So I'm in support of it as presented.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, and I, I do think it's especially kind of, I think, a key point and you touched on it especially already, but this idea of if they were either forced to put a 750-square-foot only size, second-floor addition, I think it would look strange and kind of odd and not right. To have something that's about the right size that they're asking for, then they could, we, I think it was alluded to a little bit, there could be like some carving up, so that's dedicated to the first floor, but most time these kind of floor plans and, and usage of space don't make sense in that regard either. So I think when it comes down to it, this, this is not so much a case of an applicant kind of trying to get more than what they're allowed because of, you know, just like kind of the desire to have something over. It's really a situational thing, type of thing, I believe, that truly kind of drove this more to that point. And to me, it seems like then it leads to a reasonable request and, and it will certainly, I think, look more like a true single-family home that's two-story and is supposed to some sort of what happened here type of, of appearance. So, and, to me, it, I was, you know, I first just saw the numbers and stuff. It was, it seemed like pretty significant and wasn't so sure, I felt, you know, all that comfortable with. But then when you get kind of to start looking at kind of the way this all works out, it, again, it, to me, it makes sense. I think it's reasonable and I'm in support.
Anyone else? Anybody want to make a motion? Yes, Mr. Curry.
Sure.
Thank you. This is for the special exception, right?
Yeah, first I'll make a motion for the special exception. Again, the owner is Kevin O'Laughlin and the applicant is Ron, Ronald and Gail Fraser of 20, uh, of, uh, 1, uh, 16 Pine Hill Road. Uh, for the special a- a- exception, uh, it is listed in the table of uses and that's, uh, uh, section 190, table 15, number, uh, 15 dash one, number three. I think the board finds it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Uh, there's, uh, their board finds it will not overload public water drainage sewer or other municipal system. I think the board finds that by written and oral testimony tonight, the nine, uh, special regulations are fulfilled in this application. And I think the board finds it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood. I think the board finds it will look like just another two-story, single-family home in the neighborhood. So I think all the criteria is met for a special exception and I make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion table to approve.
Actually, I have a question first. So, in my view, either we are maybe doing things out of order, or at least the motion should note that it meets all the criteria contingent upon an area variance because right now we have the 750 square feet being exceeded. So I just think for cleanliness, I think either approach, I'm fine if we just note it that way and then the area variance, assuming that it's passed, will then satisfy the criteria.
Sure, how about if I amend the motion to say the one criteria that this special exception request, uh, does not satisfy is the maximum of 750 square feet. For this special exception, there'd need to be a variance approved for that. So, uh, I want to note that as part of this, uh, approval, it also will need a variance approval for the land use. We'll pick that up in a moment.
I'll second that.
Motion is to approve, seconded by Mr. Shaw. All in favor? That's unanimous.
And I'll just keep right on going. I, I'm going to make a motion to approve, uh, the variance for, for the owner, Kevin O'Laughlin, and applicant Ronald and Gail Fraser of 20, uh, 20, uh, 16 Pine Hill Road. And again, this area variance is a request where 750 square feet is allowed, the applicant is requesting 1,180 score, uh, 1,184 square feet proposed. There's also a second area variance, which is to encroach seven feet into the 10-foot required left side yard setback. I think the board finds that both these variances are needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. Uh, the special conditions are that the existing foundation is, uh, seven feet into the 10-foot required left side yard setback. And the board finds it's reasonable to, to make an addition straight on top of that, which puts this proposed addition in the same amount of, uh, encroachment. Uh, and I think the board finds that it's also reasonable for, to permit the 1,184 square feet because that would allow this structure to have the accessory dwelling unit on the, on the second floor. And I think the board finds that that would, uh, be fine in this situation because that's the square footage of the footprint, uh, that's proposed and matches the existing footprint of the living space of the house. So I think the board finds that these two area variances are within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. I think the board finds there's no negative impact on the property values of surrounding parcels, uh, contrary, it's not contrary to public interest for these two area variances and substantial justice to the homeowner is served. So I make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion on table to approve, seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? That's unanimous. Congratulations. Um, can your motion passes and just like we said before, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Uh, other than that, you can contact Mr. Falk. All right, thank you. With that, I close the, uh, public meeting, the, the public meeting for case number four. Are we good to keep going? Next on the agenda, we have a hearing request. One letter is in fact. Did everybody have a chance to take a look at the package? All right, so, um... Also, uh, anybody, everybody has a letter from Andrea Pierce, the letter that she submitted? All right, so for the record, there, there is a letter here, uh, from Mrs. Pierce, um, made up to Mr. Falk on March 16th, 2018.
Usually, um, you can read the case information into the record and say it was approved by the board on the February 27th public hearing and the Butters submitted the, uh, the hearing request. Then just go over the points, like, just ask, ask those questions.
All right, so, um, I'll read the, the original case into the record. The owner was Elizabeth Corn and Paula Sweeney. Um, the requester of the rehearing is Andrea Pierce of 14 Curtis Drive. The, the case address was L. Curtis Drive. This is a rehearing request from the, um, February 26th, 27th, 2018 public hearing. Um, and I'll just read in, um, the case that we heard at that time. Elizabeth M. Corn and Paula J. Sweeney, owners Equivee's LLC, care of Eric Pearson, applicant L. Curtis Drive, sheet C lots 21 and 791, requesting the following. He was requesting a special exception from the land use code section 190 dash 112 to work within the 75-foot prime wetland buffer of Salmon Brook. And two, the variance from land use code section 190, 16 dash 16 dash three, to encroach 15 feet into the 44, the 40-foot required front yard setback. Both requests to combine two lots and build one sing- single-family home was in the R40 zone, R9. The zoning board approved both the special exception and the variance on February 27th, 2018. So there are, uh, four questions that we, um, normally, uh, and will go through. And I guess I'll just start with the first one and we can have discussion on that. Was there any procedural error? This includes improper notice, denying someone the right to be heard, et cetera?
No.
No. Go around the table.
I think name each person, so...
So, all right, um, and...
I, I just feel like a roll call. Mr. Lionel, Mr. Well, I mean, just go over.
And do we, uh, do we include the, um, the, the, the alternates too in this, this one or is it just, uh...
I think it's just the voting members.
Just the voting members.
Well, I think we can solicit opinion.
Yeah, I think we, if anybody, if the alternates want to offer any comments, we should take those, but I think, uh, it's as far as the actual determination, so...
All right, so, so what I'll do is I'll, I'll restate the question. Um, if there's anybody that wants to have any discussion, uh, before the roll call, just raise a hand, otherwise I'll just go around, uh, to the, with the roll call, all right? Uh, again, the first question was, um, was there any procedural error? This includes improper notice, denying someone the right to be heard, et cetera. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, Mr. Lionel.
No.
Mr. Shaw.
No.
Mr. Curry.
Uh, no.
Ms., Ms. McKay.
No.
Uh, myself, no. Mr. Boucher, no. Was it an illegal decision? In other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for special exception and or variance? Is there any discussion?
Well, I guess, um, part of Ms. Andrea Pierce's argument, uh, I, I think, uh, she's saying that the, the flooding issues, uh, I, I think she's alluding that we didn't, or the board didn't address those fully. I think that's what she's saying. Uh, I would also say on that that I, I, I guess I speak for myself that I think I do consider, you know, the testimony that there's more water coming off the hills from behind with that may with development. And if there was standing water, uh, at times of the road, which can be icy, but I felt then and now that the development of this lot isn't going to make that worse. I think the water gets around that, okay? So I feel that I did, uh, address, yeah, it's not really a point of law, you might say, but it was a, a concern for the development, but...
Maybe I'm speaking for myself.
But I, I feel I did or we did. I guess I'm speaking for myself on that or it could be for the board. I think the board did or I did, but that's my opinion on, on that question.
Yeah, I recall similar testimony, especially we had the engineer in here that gave extensive testimony about how that drainage could actually potentially be improved with that system that they were proposing to put in.
Mr. Chairman, also, the Conservation Commission approved this and also the state also did as well. So there was two other agencies that looked at this and probably greater wetland and flooding issue, issues than, than, than we did. They're the experts in this field and they, they both approved that as well. So it was, and I think the board also covered these points in their testimony quite a bit.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? Mr. Lionel.
No.
Mr. Shaw.
No.
Mr. Curry.
No.
Ms. McKay.
No.
Mr. Boucher is no. Okay, the next question, uh, is, does the request for rehearing contain any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing? Any discussion on that? Mr. Lionel.
I don't think it does because I, my reading of Ms. Pierce's letter, it seems to simply repeat the comments that... repeat the comments that she made at the original hearing. I don't see anything new in here. Personally, I would, I voted against this, but given that it passed, I don't see any grounds to reopen it.
Ms. Vitale.
The only thing I didn't remember from her letter being discussed, and it, it maybe would have had no bearing on everybody's opinion, was the fire hydrant, the fact that there's no fire hydrants on the street, and the, and the access area to the road itself.
I remember that.
Is not maintained. I didn't remember that.
Yep. Any other discussion? Mr. Curry.
I guess I, I didn't remember about, you know, a discussion about it being a 2,000, proposed 2,000 square feet with a two-car garage being, you know, a, a bigger house, or notably bigger house than what's on the street. Maybe that was discussed, I, I didn't remember that, but, you know, I think, I, I went and re-looked, there's kind of a variety of homes on the street, and I didn't, so even if that wasn't discussed, and it's here, I'm, I'm happy, you know, to, to talk about it now, which is, I didn't, so may, maybe the other houses aren't 2,000 square feet with a two-car garage, but I didn't see this as being out of the ordinary on the street. I, I mean, I kinda see it as single-family homes on the street, and I'm gonna take it that she's probably correct in that 2,000 is probably the biggest one with a two-car garage, but I didn't think it to be unusually, you know, out of place that would require limiting the square foot of, of the house to make it more match the neighborhood. So, that's my, my feeling on that, that it's, that it wouldn't be a square peg in a round hole. I mean, I do, I'm sensitive to the, to the fact that, you know, the current residents of that street have kind of a front-row seat to the beautiful Salmon Brook, and this house is gonna maybe get in the way of that view a bit. I mean, I'm sensitive to that, but I don't think that that is new information, so I'm maybe getting a little long-winded in saying I'm not seeing any new information.
I think Mr. Fox just told me that there was discussion on it, so.
Oh, there was.
Yeah, there was.
I think he even said it on the plan, there, there was something in writing about the 2,000-square-foot house with the two-car garage. It wasn't talked about too much, but I know it was discussed at the meeting, I mean, I do, I remember it.
I remember it as well.
Yes.
It was, it was.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Lionel.
No.
Mr. Shaw.
No.
Mr. Curry.
No.
Ms. McKay.
No.
Mr. Boucher is no. Next question, the final question on the rehearing request is, is there anything which would or could cause the board to make a different decision? Any discussion?
I, I didn't, I didn't find anything new. I mean, I know it doesn't satisfy Ms. Pierce's concerns, but I, I think we discussed all of these, 2,000 fair, square foot included, now that Mr. Fox reminded me, so I do feel it's a representation of what we already discussed at the, the meeting, so, my thought on that question.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? Mr. Lionel.
No.
Mr. Shaw.
No.
Mr. Curry.
No.
Mr., Ms. McKay.
No.
Mr. Boucher is no. So, make a motion to deny the rehearing request, is, is that a motion that I make?
Sure, you could do it.
Okay, so, do I have to read, do I read this all back into?
Why don't you just summarize and say, based on the discussion, you make a motion to deny?
So, based on the discussion that we've been having on the rehearing request, I make a motion to deny the rehearing request, seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion?
Just explicitly state that we did, you know, go through these four major questions and, and found unanimous agreement that none of these were satisfied.
So noted, so I, I accept it, Mr. Shaw's addition to the motion. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of denying the rehearing request? It's unanimous.
We don't have any minutes. We only have one meeting in March, so the first one was snowed out. The second meeting, the minutes aren't done, but we didn't send them out in the package, because they were, they were only done a couple days ago. We'll get the next, the next package. We do have an agenda for the next meeting, which should be on your, on your table, three cases.
They're all, they're all kind of center part of this city, so I don't see any regional impact.
All right, so, Mr.?
Here, you wanna take a look at that? Oh, Mr. Shaw, I'd just jump in and say, I had a chance to look at it before I turned it over, and I don't find any regional impact either.
The only case that is interesting is the third one. That one was before the board a couple months ago, and it just back, and I will, I won't get into any of the specifics on it, you can read it, other than that.
Are we going to get some information about what supposedly has changed?
That's what we are expecting to be sent out in the package, which will be sent out next week.
Okay.
The applicant was told to answer that first question.
So, 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 I, so, there is, so, the, from what we've discussed, there is no regional impact.
I think Mr.?
Mr. Shaw.
And I said no, and.
No. Mr. Lionel.
No.
No, myself, no. All right, any other business?
Just, I won't be here at the next meeting, Marcia or Kate, or both of them, filling up.
I'd take both of them to fill your shoes.
I don't know about that.
I guess I just had one point, if this could be included in the packets, because I find myself, when the packet comes and I, doing sidewalks and I have it in front of me, I always say, oh, I wish I had this with me, because sometimes, in the, many times in the application, it's not clear what is actually being asked for.
Right, because I think, think the city does a really good job of converting those applications into what's meaningful to us to understand what's really being asked for, yeah.
Try to write them as clear as I can. Yeah, we'll make sure you get the.
Okay, any other discussion? No?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seven forty-eight.
We adjourned at seven forty-eight.